All right, it's six o'clock. We will call the planning commission work session for June 21st in order. Six oh one. First we'll do a roll call. Dave, I'm here. Jesse?
Here.
Nick is excused. Lee?
Here.
John?
Here.
Casey?
Here.
And Todd?
Here.
All right. Anything changing on the agenda for tonight? Anything to add or anything? Anyone would like to make a motion? Prove the agenda? Motion for the agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going to open up now for public comment at six oh two. Comment is for anyone. We have public here tonight, so it's kind of a big day for us. You would like to? We have, you can have up to three minutes. If there's anything you'd like to speak. I know you're here to speak on one thing in particular. If there's anything else you would like to at this time? And we'll open it up.
So I have three minutes to go through my whole?
No, this is just your, your three minutes of public comment on anything in general. If you'd like to sing us a song or anything?
Sing our happy birthday. That's probably something I get.
We don't get much here.
I did see on the way up here that you had a open position for, what did I say?
Clerk.
Clerk.
Anyone care to make any official public comment? All right, at six oh three, we will close the public comment section. All right, and then we will move into our discussion items. First one is for tiny digs in Muskegon, preliminary discussion of the campground with tiny homes on West Macmillan. I take it that's what you were all here for?
Right.
Okay. If you would like to take a moment and give us a presentation here and what you're looking for?
Yeah. We did discover in the last few days, since I had talked initially a couple of weeks ago with Steve, that the campground concept wasn't going to work because of state regulations. Our tiny houses are not RVIA certified and anything on chassis and wheels according to the state that you're in a campgrounds have to be RVIA certified. And that's kind of like, you've probably heard organic farmers say, well, you know, my produce isn't certified organic, but it is organic. But the cost is so exorbitant and the process to go through to do that is a hard one. And that's, I have a number of fronts. This isn't a new concept for us. We've been in the tiny house world for about eight years now. And through the research phase of doing tiny digs that we have in Oregon. And so through those eight years, I've met a lot of different people out in the field and, you know, watched all the legalities nationwide and worldwide really on the topic. And some of the tiny house builders have gone to do the RVIA certification because they help their folks get mortgages and such on their houses. Some of the tiny houses can get up to $100, $150, $200,000 whether it or not, if they get really fancy and outrageous with them. But it's a long process. It's for somebody that's really manufacturing them. And we're just a small mom and pop kind of thing. My husband and son and a couple of other guys are builders. And so we just build all our tinys ourselves. So we're not RVIA certified. I talked to Steve this week about the possibility of talking with y'all about, in Portland, we're classified as a hotel and about kind of running that through the system here or other places. They're just called short-term rentals and looked at in that aspect. So we're trying to find out how it would work best within Dalton Township ordinances and within state ordinances too. But the campground situation wasn't going to work when I got into it. That was kind of a new concept for us to look at it as a campground. We can still have four tent sites on the development. If you keep under five, then you don't have to be classified as a campground apparently with the state. So you can have four and then whatever, you know, you're doing with your other properties. So we could still have that as a, as an option too, you know, so that it's something. Mike, our realtor, and I came up and saw Steve one day and we were just kind of batting around some ideas of, you know, how can we make this work here in Dalton Township? And I do have, I'll get those out for you in a bit. I do have the location. We're looking at a piece of land over on, just off Whitehall Road on Macmillan. And that piece of property is actually 20 acres that we like to purchase. We have an accepted offer of the land owner. But there is a three-acre parcel on the front facing Macmillan Road. And that's where we would propose putting the tiny houses on wheels and having this little gathering lodging spot, short-term rental. Our dream has always been to live together with our kids on a piece of property. And so the back part of that property is where we'd just love to have our homes in the next year or two up there too. So, and we have the development of the tiny houses up in the front. And these are definitely short-term rentals. In your packet that you got for the meeting tonight, I did a PowerPoint presentation. And I don't know if you've all gone through that or not, but I can kind of go through it briefly and quick about getting into all the details and reading everything to you. But there's a, the third slide in is a picture of our son and Bruce and I out in Portland, Oregon, at our development out there in front of some of the houses there. We are building these houses in the city of Muskegon and we're at the Adelaide Point warehouse is there building these. So our development in Portland, Oregon, we've worked really hard at that and it's now under management so that we can come home. So West Michigan is our home. The next slide is an aerial view of tiny digs in Portland. That's just to kind of give you a feel for what that looks like. They're kind of in a circle. We're right in the city in Portland. And we're in a mixture. The back half of the property is bordered by all residential. The two sides of, we're on a corner and then the other two sides face the streets. And we have over 50 restaurants and brew pubs within a one to 10-minute walk of the hotel there. So a little different environment there than what we have here. But again, experiential stays is one of the things I want to point out. Is one of the fastest growing segments, or is the fastest growing segments of the travel industry right now and has been for a couple of years. And tiny houses are in the top five experiential stays that people are picking and choosing. I'm sure many of you probably have seen some of the TV shows that have been out there in the last few years about tiny houses. And so yurts and themed hotels, domes and treehouses are some of the other options in those top five experiential stays too. The next two slides are, or three slides, I guess, are some of the pictures of our hotel in Portland. And there's some night views. Kind of proud of the one, the cottage house, the little white one that's on the right with the blue background of the night sky. We were actually featured in Natural Geographic Traveler Magazine. I don't even know how they pick and choose who goes in there, but that was quite a feather in our cap a couple of years ago when we got picked as the place to stay in Portland, Oregon. So we were pretty proud of that. And that was the picture that was featured in there. So the next couple of slides kind of give you a feel for what the interior of the houses look like and the exteriors. They're all made out of very quality materials, just as a stick-built home would be, you know, two-by-four construction, insulated walls, ceilings and floors and mini splits to heat and cool them. And we have fun exterior outdoor spaces that have propane fireplaces for people to gather and sit outside and enjoy the evening. And we make each of the houses themed. You'll come across the slide that has the blue house and the yellow interior. That's our rock and roll 50s, 60s themed house. We have 12 houses in Portland, Oregon. And the, one of the next slides is the yellow caboose. It looks like if people ask us, did we buy a real railroad caboose and bring it there? No, we didn't. We actually just built one to look like that. And then there's some communal area that you can see that's all nicely decorated and we have art pieces out there to make it look attractive and nice. And then there's a drone view. You can kind of see down into the development of what it looks like in the street outside. Tiny Digs Muskegon, our concept is to bring short-term rentals to the Midwest, which is kind of a new concept for tiny houses. Not many places in the Midwest have them. They seem to be focused on the outer edges of the US in the outer bordering states more than the Midwest. And we'd like to bring six to eight tiny houses on site by the end of 2022. And then fill in with a couple more to bring the count of about 10s, tinys and the four camping sites by next summer. And this was just kind of an example. We've kind of been bouncing the last few months of trying to find a home for this. We've been working with the city of Muskegon, but just haven't found the ideal spot there. And it seems that people are more wanting to be out in the country with their travel experiences right now anyhow since the pandemic started. So this spring, we started looking outside the city for some property that could be ideal for this. And this piece of land, it seems to be ideal, although it is zoned residential. The neighboring property on the east side of it is all zoned commercial. And actually, we had contacted Mike originally because the people who owned this 20 acres also owned, I think it was 11 acres next door that was commercial. And we said, oh my goodness, you know, maybe we could, you know, work a deal and get both pieces of property. But by the time we contacted them, but as an example of so many things that we've looked at this year. Oh, somebody just signed an offer on that yesterday or this morning. And, you know, the real estate is just crazy right now. And that's been kind of the story of our life the last few months that, oh yeah, that sold yesterday, like the free beer yesterday. Yeah, that's been, that's been going after us. But this was kind of an example that we had drawn up of how the houses could be laid out. But in this situation, we will be doing a more circular, more community kind of space. The houses all have flush toilets, a shower, mini splits for heating and cooling and small kitchenette. They're hooked up to a pedestal, just like in our boot park with a water sewer and 50 amp power at them. And, you know, water sewer and electric. And then there are some pictures of some kind of concept houses that, you know, we could be building some things that look like that. I just wanted to throw some of those out there so you know kind of what we're thinking of building. But then those are three slides there. But right now, under construction at Adelaide Point in Muskegon, we have four houses that are just coming down. We're doing our punch out list this week. So in the next two weeks, they're going to be, those four are going to be completed and done. And then there's one that's a garden-themed tiny house. That's one of them. As I've shown them before, they were painted. They are now painted. And then there's a couple of them that look like this real modern style tiny house. And then the next one is the farmhouse style. That one's going to be all black and white. That seems to be a big design theme right now in the building world. And then we have testimonials that I'm not going to rate for y'all to read them through, but you can look at those. Our neighbors at our development in Portland, they've been very, very happy with what we've done for the lot, for the neighborhood. And really give us kudos for, you know, it's always been, sometimes I think people with short-term rentals, they worry about, oh, the party aspect because Airbnb has just gotten a really bad rap the last couple of years. We've never had anything that kind of experience at Tiny Digs where we keep the prices up there. Keeps kind of really good people coming in and enjoying. And sometimes we do have families come in and they may rent the whole place. They, we've had some groups at like book clubs, family reunions, college friends that have come. There was a really cute one a couple of years ago, a group of college friends. They rented the whole place. And they were there for four nights. And on Saturday night, it was theme night. They all had to dress up in the attire that fit the theme of their house. And it was really cute. So our neighbors are real supportive of us and they really like what we've done for the area and the piece of property there. And we've had no rowdiness or inappropriate behavior from our guests. The last, one of the last slides here with the lighthouse on it is, you know, West Michigan. We got our West Michigan natives and we've come home. This is where our car is at. We've wanted to come home for a while and the pandemic kind of slowed us down on that. We wanted to come home a couple of years ago. But last fall, Bruce and I got to find, moved back, our son moved back a couple of years before us. But we're just a small family business and we're designing and creating the houses ourselves. We're financing all the project ourselves. We're not owned by some big company in the background, you know, supporting us and doing this. This is just us and we, for smaller town or township like Dalton, that might mean something. You know, we're not some big chain deal just because we have, this is our second development. We're just small town people too. So I think we have a lot to offer in Muskegon County with all the bike paths and shopping and the lakes and the fishing and the sports there. And it could be a real win-win for Dalton and for our family too. So we have, we have some drawings of the current owners of the property. They seem that they're as old as me or older because they had some challenges getting the copy of this survey. And part of the legal description is chopped off, but at least we have the survey. This shows on the bottom here that this has been divided, but this was just a concept drawing that I think somebody was interested in buying it a while back. And they split those, but that was never registered as to show on this, that it's still just a one, three-acre parcel up here on Macmillan Road. So, and this shows the whole 20 acres. This shows more, I've been in contact with the county about the water and the sewer. And this shows that the water and sewer do run down Macmillan. And this beautiful pond in the back that's almost five acres big. And that's one of the reasons why we want to live there. And there's some fish in that little pond. And I think it would be just the ideal place for another grandson that we came home with. But the three acres seems more than plenty of space. Our 12 that we have in Portland, Oregon, they have plenty of room. We've been for more. That's in 1900s, 19,000 square feet. So not even like, not even an acre of property there. And this would be three acres to put these, if we can manage that. And this kind of gives you the Google Maps view of the property. So you can see there's, the trees are more grown in now. So there's a lot of vegetation blocking Macmillan Road here. And even down this side. So there's a nice little clearing site in the center to do the tiny houses. And that took the last bigger run is kind of a site plan, preliminary site plan. Because when we came to talk to Steve a couple of weeks ago, he said, well, we could put down the work session to start talking about this. But I don't think I could get a site plan done by a professional. So this is my little rendition. But the little yellow rectangles are the tines in that grove of trees there. And then the little tent sites over here. There's already some, the existing driveway coming up Macmillan and then it goes over Green Creek, which I was in contact with a friend of Moore. She's the drink, um, drink commissioner. And she said, oh yeah, she remembered when the people put that culvert in, it's way overkill for Green Creek there. So it's, she says, more than sufficient to do what we want to do. And I have been working with her for a few months now. Actually, she was actually trying to point out places around Muskegon as she drove to work. She'd write me a little email every once in a while, here's a great idea for a place too. So she's pretty familiar with the project. She's seen the PowerPoint presentations stuff a couple of months ago. So she said, that culvert going over to Green Creek is plenty big and would be sufficient. I'd like to open the floor up to you guys and see what you think about this and answering questions at the mic.
So Steve, it sounds like what direction you would be going then is, is it as a public park then? That would be the direction?
So campground would qualify as a public park, but now the issues with the state allowing them?
I thought we, but campground's somewhere else. Or how we listed the campground specifically recently, did we?
Both would also fall under recreational facilities, which I believe are less than a HAG district. Like R1 is just for parks. Yeah, R1 is not allowed recreational uses. So it would fit in the public parks.
But didn't we discuss natural unruled out, public parks, public comment or not? It was a scuffle. It seems like we talked about that.
Yeah, the way it's worded in the R1 district is public parks. Then the way it's worded in the HAG district is publicly owned parks.
That's right.
And the, the tons of attorney gave an opinion that public parks can be, and?
Privately owned, or until we use that public, we're not allowed?
Is that what you have the staff memo in here, the section 16 or whatever, one, four, three, or four?
One of the reasons we thought the tent sites would be pretty cool to have there is the bike path is so close to there that, you know, encourage people to use the bike path in overnight states, even on the, coming off the bike path, track this. That's how the tent sites are.
So what's the deal with the state? They won't let you use those units as a campground?
Right.
Yeah, you can't build your own. The campground code is very, very specific. Yeah. Very, very. They have to, you have to basically buy it from an RV name if that, yeah.
Yeah.
If you put them out or whatever.
Correct. They have to have the RVIA seal number to qualify as a, they call them park model units. Otherwise, it's a camping cabin and they can't have bathrooms down there as a camping cabin.
Camping cabin, you can't have bathrooms.
Correct. Yeah.
Right.
So the tiny homes fit nowhere in the state's campground code at all.
Not in Michigan, Georgia, not other states.
And they're, you'll see a little, you'll see a little silver seal outside the door.
They don't have bathrooms in the little.
Oh, yeah. If they don't have a bathroom, then they're a camping cabin somewhere.
Yeah.
I have a question on this Google Earth. I don't know, I'm making assumptions obviously. Is that a runway going through there? It looks like a pipeline or?
It's a power line.
Pole line.
Okay.
But it's not one of those really high-powered metal pole ones. They're just still wooden poles.
Okay, that makes sense.
So it's not even like they own the property. There's just an easement just there. So.
And you're out of that easement with this design?
Yes.
You wouldn't be building under it?
No, definitely not.
We had an issue with a solar panel array one time that was a little bit encroached. So there's a provision of, you can't be so many feet. In this case, it was a pipeline though. So anyway.
Yeah, yeah. No. Yeah, we had some property up north a number of years ago and it had the big steel grader, high-powered lines. You could walk over there in the rain and it was like snapping and cracking.
So I mean, right now, today, there's nothing you're going to do with this anyways because the state doesn't allow those?
No. So not as a campgrounds, not termed as a campground. So we're trying to be a little more creative with it and, you know, term it like in Portland, we're a hotel.
How, how did that process go? Was that a multi-year?
No.
Hand wrangling, sort of a?
We picked Portland, yeah. It was very easy there. We picked Portland A because our son was living there for a couple of years already and he kept saying, come, they have come to live by me. So we checked it out. There was already a tiny house hotel there that opened two and a half early, years earlier than us. And they were always 100% booked. And when we went to the zoning, they said, oh, well, they just got their book out. And they said, we're just gonna, their process was about an eight-month process getting that.
What district is that in, in Portland?
Multnomah County.
Okay, that's not, fairly familiar, familiar with Portland.
And it's in the Kerns neighborhood.
Our, our, our development is in the Kerns neighborhood of Portland.
That's how they, yeah.
In the northeast.
Right. I think I'm fairly close to you there.
Okay, on the east side of the river. So.
Do you have any ideas, Steve, how we might proceed with this or is this something that's?
My initial thought when they had the idea for the tiny home hotel was that we could call it a hotel if it's in a C2 zoning district. Issue with this property is it's not in a C2, but it could work if it fit the definition of a campground. Since that's not, not possible with the state regulations, if the state would allow this to be considered a hotel and not a campground, then it would be allowed if it were to be rezoned to C2.
Because one of the special land uses under 6.3 is boarding slash lodging house.
No, but that's, you have to stay over seven nights and it's like a long, I just read the definition.
It has to be a single, it has to be a single building. Whereas a hotel does not need to be.
Okay.
And the proprietor needs to stay at the house. So it's an extended stay, bed and breakfast.
Gotcha. Like a detached motel. What's the significance of leading the axles or wheels on it? Does that change anything or?
Not for me it doesn't.
For the state?
Probably for the state. I don't know.
Well, it's not personal property and then it's a titled vehicle. You have to get a license plate for it.
When it's on, it'll be a state.
Um, you can, yeah, you have to keep it on the wheels and stuff and then it's a titled vehicle instead of being like a permanent truck driver.
So they're so new.
Yeah, I've seen a dilemma, lots of.
There's a lot of little nuances.
Do you guys list these on Airbnb and VRBO?
Um, we, I, when I, with the new management company, they do have them on VRBO. I had them on Airbnb for a little bit when the pandemic hit to try and get a little more traffic. 85% of our guests come from our own personal website. Uh, we had a really good website designer who brought us a lot of traction right away. And so 85, we, some people come from Expedia. The other 15% come from Expedia because we are on there. Airbnb, we only would get like 1% of our guests from Airbnb. And VRBO, I didn't, I wasn't even on there when I was managing it, but the company took over September 1st and they. But the company took over September first and they put on VRBO. But I don't know how much traction they get from that either because a lot of their properties are great, big fancy, you know, like big fancy houses that you'd see in movies and stuff.
So you bought all twenty acres?
We're, we're going to, yeah. It's contingent of, our offer was accepted, but contingent upon what we can get approved from the township to do this project here.
I'm kind of thinking about here, we have a county park in our township on Twin Lake. Has anybody ever thought about those being installed in a place like that? Cause they rent a pavilion, they rent a little house there for parties, nothing overnight. They happen to have quite a bit of property. But that's a county thing and I don't, I don't know if that would.
Yeah, I don't know.
With so many big parks, you know, and already established.
And when you were going through Meskegan, they were, they were trying to get it as a park designation, correct?
Actually, they were gonna do us as a PUD in Meskegan. So when I was looking at land down there, I kept saying, well, because in Portland it really mattered. You know, I, you know, when I looked at land, I had to know exactly what the zoning was and stuff. And Meskegan said, no, because we actually started with them a year and a half ago. You know, when we'd come home, we'd talk to them and they go, no, we'll just do a PUD and you can go on any piece of property that we find that would be appropriate. And they kept giving us this, their parks. But there was some dissent from some of the people that lived around the parks. They didn't want in the city, they didn't want the tiny houses there.
In the park?
In the park, yeah, in the park. So they didn't want us on the, they didn't want commercial developments to start coming into the city parks in Meskegan is what some of the community members voiced. And they wanted them to stay pristine. So they're having some discussions down right now because people are not happy with the deck restoration that's out on Pier Marquette. And so it's kind of a touchy subject right now with coming into the parks because that is in Pier Marquette Park.
Have you talked to, talked to any of the neighbors across the street from that or the Pier Marquette store?
No, I have not. We, we just found this property, well, we found it about six weeks ago. But then we had to find the owners because it wasn't really listed. We found it, it had been listed last year and that's how I found the listing. And Mike had to track them down through postcard to their post office box. So two weeks ago, we came and saw Stephen. They called us on Saturday and said, yeah, we're still interested in selling it. You know, the listing expired last August. And then Monday we came up and saw Stephen.
And we went to one of the trainings on the PUDs and Grand Haven was having some of that. And I remember there was conversation and that's, I know it's unit development, but what's the P?
Plan.
That could also be an option.
No, it has to be five, the parcel has to be five acres.
They would need to split.
A bigger parcel.
Split off from that other.
Just the boundaries on the three acre parcel.
Yeah, to five. We wouldn't have any problems with that because it's all, we're all gonna be there together, you know.
Do we have anything like that in?
I don't believe we currently have any PUDs in the township.
Yeah, it's thirteen one, it's chapter thirteen.
Yeah, none are currently.
Right. There's a lot of guidelines. There's really only three things you can do. You can either make the parcel five acres, you can rezon the parcel to C2, or you can, we can allow hotels, motels in R1. That's like the only way to, that's the only three things that we could do to get this through. I don't know which way.
So how far did you go with the special use of that?
Currently, none of the special uses in R1 would fit for this at all.
Closest we had was that boarding lodging house and the public parks. But we've already kind of allowed them.
They don't meet the definition.
So if, if it were to go to the five acre, they could do it as a PUD or?
Yeah, I would say so. I haven't read all the, there's, there's twelve pages for the, the PUD. So I'd have to see if anything else in there was going out, but.
Thirteen one.
I mean, it's pretty open. It says in the PUD district, the planning commission, they permit any principal or accessory uses as are consistent with the design principles and purposes in those chapters. So it seems pretty open ended.
Yeah, it's just a longer, longer group of times, more.
I figured the twelve pages, I figured.
Situation wasn't really matter, right? We didn't even know anyways with the state.
Correct. So you, we would need to discuss with the state and see what, what would be required to make the, the tiny house hotel concept work and not be considered a campground. That might, maybe we'll just have to take the wheels off. So it'll be considered a permanent structure and permanently to the ground.
Isn't that what they do with mobile homes? I mean, basically they bring it into a park, once you take the wheels off, it becomes.
Yeah, and then it'd just be permanently mounted.
And then if we did rezone, there is commercial next to that property?
Yes.
Correct. At the borders of that property. There's a strip that goes between the gas station and their property that's commercial coming up McMillan. And then it takes a turn and goes to Whitehall Road, that eleven acre parcel. That did his, was only C1.
Yeah, this whole, this whole side over here is all C1 of the parcel.
Just south of the old distance.
Yeah, there's a boat place there. Then there's a big empty lot that just sold. I don't know what they're gonna do and then the BP is on the corner here.
So parcel A, would that remain R1?
Yes, okay.
Other than the, the boundary adjustments to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Slip over R1 to, so then they wouldn't be adjacent. This would be commercial and this would be commercial.
But I was thinking to you, are we not talking about that? So you don't have that.
Yes, if they move these lots over here, then commercial would border commercial.
But the creek is there.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, we could, we could, instead of, you know, we need to talk to Stephen to bump, to give the five acres to bump up this way, but we could just bump this way with the kids. You know, so to make up the five acres, but do the border adjustment, so.
That would never be.
We're, we're ready to be creative as we can to be.
And I don't, I mean personally, I guess I have a problem with the idea of those at that spot. I mean, I don't, I personally won't make the great spot. I don't see it as a problem, I guess, myself. But I would have to talk to the neighbors to be able to move it back because actually have a lot of weight where they start squawking if they do.
The nice thing is like the lighting, they're not using like these great big giant poles like you would see on a, some of the campgrounds have some of those. It's all just string lighting.
On houses.
You know, we're talking eight units, so you're talking probably eight vehicles, maybe, you know, around twelve. So it should be a.
Parking well off the road.
Typically, when we make a zoning change, it goes to all the people that border that property. And everyone sees, all they want to put commercial in. So the idea of what commercial is versus what you're proposing, you have a.
You'd rather go to the first.
Yeah, it's really, if the explanation was there, I think anybody that would said, I'd rather have that because the potential for something else to come in that off the road. This is.
Pretty low key.
Yeah, and low impact, it's not a, it's not a thing that really impacts anything else, not a noise issue or anything else. I think it's.
In our Portland development, we do have, you'll see in the night shots there, we do have a big flight pole in the center. The string lights coming off that. But here, we would just do, yeah, they're just like patio lights that come off that. But here we would just, we want to have the outdoor ambiance of the country and we wouldn't have the center pole. We just have string lights, Christmas lights on the houses. But, you know, so people can see where they're going, not just your neighbors and such.
There's quite a buffer effect now. I bet you there's quite a bit from the road to where you're gonna be at there. I mean, that way, that way is driving. I just, well, you know, right, I think, remember I had a farm, right on the water, on River Road.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So I go get the Airbnb sometime or whatever. Sometimes I stay. Hey, I usually get some on the way home. But yeah, well, then there's some other property over on Agar that I've been talking to lately, I'm on the lease. So they're for more grazing land.
Well, we could take some chickens and, we were just talking about that today. If we need to move up there, we can have a few chickens. So, oh really, you have, as many as you want. I know you have quite a few in your little travel around.
I love to, I love to live.
Is this be year round, they assume, right?
Yeah, I, I, I think it could go year round because when we came last fall, when we moved last fall, we moved in October and we went up to the Lush Run and they were just closing that day, their campground was just closing. And they said, oh my gosh, let us know when you're open. They said, we send people up to Whitehall in the wintertime, Monica and Whitehall, because there's just not enough lodging for people down there. And this would just be such a cute concept. And I think we, in Portland, we stay busy year round and other people that I know that have this concept across the country, they stay open pretty much year round. I have one friend, she has a fire tower and she's in northern Idaho with that. And it gets a lot of snow. As a matter of fact, she just did a video today. They had snow in June.
Right.
It's snowing.
It's snowing, a lot of snow. I, you know, I think if you make it, people will come, you know, if you have enough PR on it and such. I think we can make it.
So we are all in on this and we want to work with you guys however you deem fit to make this thing work.
I think working with Steve on, on some of those ideas. And I, and I think really, and if you know what downtown township is, it is a very end of the driveway. People get together and talk and if you get that group on your side, you have, you'll have a much, much easier opportunity if they come pitchforks and then you have an entirely different thing that really, that puts us in the position of it's hard to make a decision to say we're gonna change a zone to people that live there residentially and have been there and you'll hear for generations. And, you know, and that's, we don't want to change that necessarily. That's, that wouldn't be our intent, but certainly an idea for a business or something coming in there. Obviously, as, if it's something, again, if people use this, I, I could see my family, I could see, you know, people when you bring in people from out of town and say, they want to stay in a hotel, we got something like this. It's very unique, so I mean, it has a, it has an application. And that's not our part. Our part is to, to really look at the, the nuts and bolts of it. And I think you got some, some ideas at least that might work for you. I think, do you have any recommendations on how, how you could, I'm not trying to say as the wizard, but.
He cringed when I said PUD. We don't have a dead box.
That's the only part I remember, I went to these training sessions and when you go in there, the first thing they brought up PUDs and there was groans from the entire group because it's, it's restrictive and then you know, someone says they're gonna do this and then they don't do that, then you have to enforce things. It puts us in kind of an oversight capacity.
It takes forever and you have to get bonds and stuff like, it looks awful. There's no wonder we don't have one in township already.
So that's why we said, hey, can we just be a hotel? But like I said, it would need rezoning. I don't know what that process is like in your township.
Well, I think that's actually probably shorter than the PUD. Less work, probably less cost to those.
And I think with the, the sale pitch for me, if I'm going in your shoes, I would be saying, we're gonna be living right behind it. It's not like you're people that are putting this in and walking away. It's not a walk away business. You're, you're actually going to be there and you wouldn't do something like that next to your own home because you're gonna be one of them. It's not, so that my PR firm is, I'm just. That would be, that's that group, we have several things that went in there, we're gonna have a, they were gonna do slag destruction or something and remember they were angry and rushing. Yeah, and man, that was one of our most well attended groups. A week later, the, it was, they, they were very, I will say the, the, the passion at which they came in and the way they communicated to each other was, was pretty impressive. So I, I think to tell you they, they do know each other very well and getting somebody on, on that side or you can take them to the property or I don't know how you go, are doing something ahead of time.
So how far out do you think that, I mean, I was just going to see that anybody in the township can, can talk about it. But how far in your minds do they have to please to, to make it where it's not obtrusive? Maybe not at all the rest of the township, but just the neighbors? And how far of the boundary do you think would be adequate to, to please the local, you know, residents? Residents that live.
Neighbors there.
The people who will get the initial information will talk to the people that it, it will become something. So you're gonna have that group? That's a good question and I wish I had a magic number to say go, you know, square mile or. I, I can't imagine that.
Well, I'm just asking because I wonder how much you're considering, somebody that lives on this end of the township is worried about, you know.
No, initially, it's the people, so people are gonna get the notices, the radius, what is it, five hundred foot?
Three hundred. Three hundred, yeah, okay. So that's really what we're asking.
They're gonna get the notices, they have the next four meters.
How far do they have to squeeze really around there at least?
They will bring support from other people, but our intent is listening to how that affects the area. And really, I think your, your selling point of, like I go back to it, you're living on the property. It's not like it's a walk away business.
Right, right. Like I said, we're not some.
But if you give us, if we give us a room full of people to squeal and they cack about it and, and it can kind of go either way, then what do we do? We gotta be like, okay, we're gonna go to the residents, you know? If it's split up property like one twenty like we had, I mean, it's like you got commercial here, then it's back to commercial. It's not such a big deal, you know, but.
Yeah, we've looked at some places on one twenty, but it's like.
It's too heavy traffic or it'd be too loud.
It is, it's too loud. We get all the cars like that. So would you think it would be a good idea to have like a neighborhood meeting like right there on the property and like have a hot pot roast or something?
I know in the past, many of the people that, that brought up concerns about that, their kids have been fishing in that, on. And had there have been, it's kind of a neighborhood thing now and I, I just know their concerns were a lot of, they had, they had a very vocal group and they had spokesmen and they had people, they were organized, they had what they were gonna say. So to have that group to say who the organization was coming from, it started with the people right on the board, but it went.
But that was a big industrial thing too.
Yeah.
But they really came out of drones.
Yeah. So I would, I would say certainly if you're, if you're looking to get that group on your side, certainly inviting them to see that, you know, showing behind the curtain of what you're, you're planning and that you're showing the whole site. And we're gonna be here and then the business will be here and so we're gonna be, here's the, you know, setbacks and we'd have to, we know the setbacks of how far it has to be off the road, that you're not talking right against their property or.
Yeah, and we plan to stay, you know, way away from board and stuff.
No, not this piece over here. Already pushing. They are, they're kind of crushing out in there. They have these people all fired up.
So when somebody came before about the property, what were they gonna do with that?
It was a major, major industrial, loud. From what, from what the description was, someone said, I saw a YouTube thing, so that obviously had a cam of truth. From what, from what the description was, someone said, I saw a YouTube thing, so that obviously had a camp of truth.
Oh, it was on YouTube, was it? That would be true. Oh, yeah.
And, and again, we can't, we can't put...
Kind of recycling.
Oh, okay.
And they, they, they store it there a lot. The problem is what would they be bringing out and it would be the contamination getting into groundwater and things. It was, and they'd have to bring in so much before they'd bring the units in to actually crush it. We weren't really sure what we were, it wasn't, it didn't really fit the property or the design for what we wanted for the township. So, it, it was a pretty easy decision. In this case, it's one where, like I said, I could see it working there if, if they see, you know, as being a part of their neighborhood.
Right.
And being in residential.
Does it say only, sorry, go ahead.
Does it say only important if we're going the rezoning route? I mean, what's that?
It would be important for both.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause a P U D is essentially rezoning, but what that's just that's.
Well, I was just wondering if somebody buys, I don't know.
So, my question to you is, if residents come and they have, uh, we don't like this because we don't like it, is that a valid reason not to new the property?
Not necessarily. I, I think what, what we have to wait this on is we have to almost, we have to show reason why we would change it to commercial. That's our, our mission is not to really, just to, to grant or deny, but to say it makes sense. We have what we call, every township has a master plan and we're trying to fit things in there. We're trying not to do what we call spot zoning where we just switch something because it, we have to really show well-thought-out concepts as to what we're really doing with that. You know, when you put all the time into putting something together and you give it to us, that's what we're really doing, you know? In addition, as we're trying to see, does it fit, does it have all the I's down and T's across? This is one to start the process, you really need to get the, the neighbors would need to come in and say, we don't want it there because we don't want the zoning change. It's been residential for this period of time, my grandparents have lived here, my, and we, we had a lot of that the last time. So, there's a lot of people that, that really want to see the property where they live, not change. And that's what we have to try to sell is that we would be doing something that wouldn't harm their property. And that's, that would be your, your, kind of your mission to, like you said, to invite them to see the property and they've all been on there, I guarantee you. Kids have a bite, I guarantee that. That, that's why I think, you know, it's not, it's not a foreign entity coming in, it's someone who's coming into the community and being a part of it, so...
And we have to have something good to stand on the rezoner, you know? So, I mean, if something across the street was already commercial and or, you know, two more lots, two more parcels to the west, for example, if they were commercial, that's pretty easy to stand on and say, yeah, that fits really good. But when you're just adding on one side, that guy, you're sharing three sides already.
With residential.
But with residential and then the neighbors hate it, now it comes to down to why would we do it?
Yeah.
Right, but to your point earlier, it's commercial up to that edge, you know, if we were just extending that...
That helps it.
Yep.
That helps it, but at the same time, just the three sides, you know, so it's a tough argument, say, yes, makes sense if all the neighbors hate that type of deal.
Yeah.
In their minds, it's gonna be residential, it's now going to commercial. So, what is the commercial? And that's where your selling point would be as to what you're bringing in. You're not bringing in the Rock Foundation or whatever the, they were crushing there, nothing like that where they could point to a lot of things, they...
And you gotta understand too, a lot of people, here's the other thing to it, if you don't wanna purchase it until the rezoning is done, there's a lot of people out there that are well aware that you could get it. The township could go through and rezone it and then you don't buy it and somebody else buys it and puts some other commercial use there. So, people get real nervous about that too, because if you haven't committed, they don't wanna commit.
Good point.
You know, because that is very...
It's C two, it's C two, right there.
That would be a good question doing a P U D, 'cause then you could say this...
This is specifically one of those.
It's a longer route, but it's, it, you have, you have a better...
Or self.
Yeah, your, your, your point is, and I think, I don't know, cost-wise or any of those things, the rezone, like you said, two meetings and we could have, but again, if, if it looks like we're trying to push something, then it's suddenly, why are you in such a hurry? And then, you know, we, we've had this before, we want a well-thought-out plan with, with public input and as well as your input. And again, if, if we do get to that point where we did have a meeting, you would have your opportunity with them here to be able to give your presentation with your documentation and be able to say, here's what we do.
But they come here with the mindset.
Yeah, you're already pitchforks in the hand when they sit down, so...
That's what we wanna avoid.
Yeah.
That's what we strongly wanna avoid.
So, it's a matter of getting out there and that kind of doors.
Well, we can do that.
By the way, I mean, with somebody else, I, I don't mind, like I say, the concept, if it's kind of a C two, whatever, but that's what the...
You could see something like that, we've not had anything like this in our, I haven't seen anything like this anymore. So, see it in, in some sort of an opportunity. I mean, I'm, I'm very curious doing that, you know, man, that sounds...
Question, Dave. I live at Twin Lakes, I'm familiar with the neighborhood at least. We have a lodge that's, I've been there sixty years maybe, six or so cabins, a main house. And, uh, I, I don't know how that's zoned and I'm trying to think, what would be the difference between what you would like to do and what they already have? What they already have are foundations with log cabins, sort, so to speak. But then, curiously, surrounding that on the same side of the lake, uh, there is almost Airbnb exclusive nowadays, bigger homes and so on. There's a lot of demand for that, they, they're packed during the summer, obviously, but the lodge concept, I don't know, you know, who coined that term? It's on a lake, it's cozy, you know, it's Four Seasons, but, uh, in, in today's administration, I don't know if that would even be something that someone could even do or...
That, that lot is on commercial.
Oh, it is, okay.
I'm not sure if it's two more or C two.
On the corner of Middle Lake Road and Lake Street or something.
So, selling point could be, meaning that we have it like this on like, the problem they would see is the in-town people coming in, kids running around and, you know, chaos. And I know what, that's what...
There's a lot of Chicago guests, but more and more, according to my neighbors, and they, they market that kind of, all run with the lake, lakes. It's a big deal.
There is this pretty low key in Portland, so...
You can tell totally, you can tell the difference in...
A little bit more...
Real quaint, you know, and cozy.
Totally different community.
But they have residential behind it, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, you see it in Porters.
Right in a residential...
Testimonials look really good, I think, Chris did them a little bit.
Pardon me?
The testimonials that you had.
Yeah.
That might be something.
The, the neighbors, they send, like you said, their guests when they come to town, they, and one neighbor just called and they said, you know, wedding, uh, all their wedding guests to come stay there and take over the whole place. Yeah, they, yeah, so, yeah.
It's a P R campaign that, that requires, however, however we approach this, we would do the journey with you, but the problem is we have to make the ultimate decision as to what's best for... Obviously, residents have, uh, have a big swing factories and if they say, we don't want that there, that certainly becomes a part of it. But again, winning them over and if they see what that is, it's not as intrusive as some of the other things. And, you know, the opportunity, like you're saying, down the road, someone else could buy and come down with another plan.
Right.
You know, we'd be in the same position, so I certainly see it fitting. And again, with your business being in your front yard, you're not a, you're not a stone's, you're a stone's throw away for any opportunities to come with that.
Okay, we'll start contacting some of the neighbors. I don't know how about going and knocking on people's door all the country, but it's kind of a residential neighborhood across the street there.
Yeah.
Mail them, give them those pictures and comments.
So...
You have the address already for the people you'd have to notify.
Okay.
There's really only about six, six or eight houses, I think, across, you know, on those two, the two roads that are off the middle and on the other, other side, so should...
Not too many.
Expand the area a little bit, but...
Yeah, not too many on the three hundred feet radius, we kind of clogged that up under...
It's not unusual, every time we send those things out before a public, before we have a public hearing on something, there's always somebody that the initial feeling is, oh, my God, she can't do that. But then when you get to the meeting, sometimes you know when he comes in.
Yeah.
Other times, we hear very little and then they're lying. There's, we have a really, I think your, your, your case, again, showing what you've done here, it's, it's very, it can sway you definitely to see what the opportunity is there. And it's not a big eyesore or anything that's gonna stand out, it's, it's actually homes on that side that look nice and would help, I think, with everybody's property value. And that's usually one of the things people scream, it doesn't hurt that, so...
I think too, um, I know with some of the powers that be in Muskegon, um, they said, this is a good way to get our feet in the water, tiny houses, because it will be the wave of the future. We're in a housing crisis all over the world, really, um, in the U S, just a major housing crisis. That's how they got so well-accepted in Portland, you know, they came in as commercial businesses and then our housing crisis out there is so dire that, um, about four or five years ago, they said, tiny houses are allowed in your backyard or driveway, you can rent a space and somebody can come in to live there. And it's worked out really well to alleviate some of our housing crisis there.
Poster channel for homelessness, Seattle, Portland, LA, San Francisco, right?
Really not, I don't call it a homeless issue for a lot of those big cities, it's more of a drug issue. It's sad to say, we have a drug crisis in the U S and the big cities. And, um, you, once you've lived in Portland long enough, you'll see that's, the meth is out of control, it's so cheap and it's, it's a sad set of data, what it's doing to society these days.
Yeah.
So, that has helped alleviate some of the real homeless people from being homeless in Portland, because housing is very, very expensive there, like in L A and San Francisco and that type of thing, so, it's, yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think, hopefully that gives some ideas and...
Yeah, yeah. We'll knock on some doors and send out some packets and, you know, see if we can pop some people, get some people out of our eyes to start with, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your, your ears are listening.
All right, we'll move on to the, the May thirty-first agenda pages. And we got the additional...
Okay, have a good day.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I think we, what, what that side of me, I don't know, I lose you.
I'm bringing up hope.
Okay. Yeah, mine's a little bit, I don't see it at all, I don't think. Most of mine's will do that.
No, I think you have to vote in the main session.
We should vote at the main session.
Oh, I have a main session for it.
Sorry, buddy.
Do we discuss it, do we discuss now or do we wait until then to discuss?
We just discuss, look at the site, okay, if you have any questions.
Yeah.
What's the Chinese do here, other stuff?
I've got, I've got...
Spiral bound thing or...
I gotta see them look at it. Oh, it's good, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, it's underneath or not stapled, I think. That's right. I think the township could spring for some staples.
Does everyone want a staple there?
I'd like, I've been like, listening to yours all this time.
I tend to put a tiny vehicle and then when it doesn't...
These are very expensive.
Well, it's for...
I'm normal, the regular.
I use the staple, but then I can see people taking it apart and...
Oh, gotcha.
I'm not opposed to staples, I can take orders, just like that.
Just play Burger King, man. We, we have, we have two staples, uh, two binders, uh, I, no, however you're...
Yeah, easy enough staples, staple, yeah.
But Tom and I went out and we took a tour just so we could see exactly what he was doing. They have stuff staked out there and, and literally, it, it makes, what they're trying to do, it, it doesn't affect anything, it's not in anything that, that, there's no additions that are gonna cause any hardships, there's no height issues, there's no... I mean, everything they're doing is, it's pretty impactful to, to watch the whole process there. And they're moving their site there, the building that they're asking for is actually a training center.
The, the office.
Yeah, the office building with the training in addition to, that's where their staff will be, you know, bring finds in and things like that, it's, uh...
They're currently short on office space, break room space, spare parts space, and that kind of thing, so the fact they wanted to go to new buildings just makes perfect sense. And, um, it's quite a learning experience, we got the whole Cook's tour, very interesting.
You know, the investment, again, staying in township and it's not a short-term thing, it's a continuation of the evolution of this whole process. It's just gonna make that whole process much, much cleaner, at least from the way we saw it.
They're still waiting on, uh, the county for the road then.
For the driveway.
Yeah, they're still waiting on...
But even if, we can do a contingent either way, I think, but you know, it's, gosh, it's hard to believe that they would have our time with that driveway the way that fits off the property. But the county's not gonna allow the gap there. Just not a second one.
No.
The only thing I see is that the buildings are technically too tall, because, and, well, I mean, what's their principal building? And I, we talked about having a ton of principal buildings.
Yeah, these would be additional principal buildings.
Okay, how do you delineate between a principal building and a accessory building? What is an accessory building?
Well, the thing is though, theirs, we, it seems like we specified that in their special use.
That everything would be a principal building? Okay.
In their special use.
Like we could find that and buy one again?
Right, but that's, I remember that's what we did, because there was multiple towers and all this stuff that was up high, so, yeah, that was, it was in the special use.
Can I ask an off-topic question? Why do we care whether the accessory building is shorter than the principal building? And who picked that it was supposed to be twenty-four? Why can't, I noticed in commercial, they're the same, like your buildings are just this. I just wonder. It's so confusing and so unnecessary.
Another arbitrary number.
It's another arbitrary number.
Yeah, I think they want one-story, um, whole apartment, two and a half story.
Okay, so that's where they picked it as?
Yeah, twenty-four with a, um, a large building with a regular roof would be about twenty-four feet.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, that does eliminate a lot of the cable-style barns.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's just...
Well, if you ever get bored, maybe we can visit...
Why not just have the same, just have thirty-five feet?
We have so many things in this thing that when you read it, you have to live by it and I'm going, why?
I know, and that's what I always think when I'm reading it, I'm like, okay, why? Why do we have to, but we have to enforce it, which kind of stinks. But yeah, if they had, if they, all their buildings are principal, then I guess they're good, that was my only...
It's in the special use, yeah. What's that?
The original special use, you have...
Like two thousand three?
Oh, two, three, oh, that was that, oh, yeah.
Oh, well, they have two thousand three, eleven, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen.
I mean, is there any, anything anyone sees as far as either additional support or anyone sees if there's any concerns with this?
Nope.
I mean, I, I can't see anything from, from one plan, from their initial plan to this addition, doesn't
Well, I do, I guess I do. On here, it says, the building heights are different on this, these pull-out drawings. They say forty-five by eighty-five by thirty and on here it says forty-five by eighty-five by thirty-five, which is, either one would be fine, but I wish they were both said the same thing.
We can get a clarification as to what or they don't know what their building got.
Oh.
They were gonna go with the largest footprint possible known and we was here last month and they were just gonna go with the largest, they were gonna go with whatever it was. I remember eighty by a hundred and then they said like eighty by ninety or whatever. I do remember that last one.
And you can approve a larger building and I can administrate it?
Make it straight.
Okay.
So it's thirty instead of thirty-five?
Gotcha.
It's easier to decrease it administratively than increase.
So I don't see really too much that we have jumps out here on this one. I think it's just, give us opportunity to speak and see, get that approved at the thirty-five.
If I remember right, too, for what it's worth, but if I remember right, their office building was shown on their original site plan that was approved. All their site plans to mine now, they show an office building on there because they was planning that building all these years before they closed the office hotel. They never showed the whole storage building, but they showed an office building. It wasn't much towards the center of the property, it wasn't that bad south line. But it was on their original site plan. So what, I mean, I don't know technically if they even have to get a special use for that because they already showed it on there, but I don't know if they could.
I think to be safe, we should
Just do it.
Still a long trip to spend over here and it's a different spot.
Yeah.
All right, anyone have anything else on that? Then we move on to our favorite part of the night. We have adjournment at seven fourteen. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.